Do you want to do?
Okay, thank you very much. I call the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees to order. It is July second, twenty twenty five, and it is five thirty one. Uh we do have our city clerk here today. Was going to swear in our brand new uh member Gary Brackett. Please go ahead.
I would say everybody should write here for me please. You're ready after me. All right, stay today. Hi Gary Brackett. Do some of these were offered.
You saw them and swear or.
That I was important to send.
But I was important.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith.
That I bear true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without anti mental reservation.
Without anti many mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Our purpose of evasion.
Then I will well it faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I'm about to enter.
For time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Because I'm the most to stop for me.
Thanks.
Beautiful. You.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We got a new member.
Thank you. Welcome Gary. Okay, we will have full call, please. Juanita Garner, here. David Norgard.
Here.
Al Jones.
Here.
Gary Brackett.
Here.
Deborah Schwartz.
Here. In stereo.
We will move on to item two, acceptance of the agenda. Do you want to have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
We have a roll call, please. Juanita, Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Gary Brackett?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item three, public comments. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Library Board of Trustees on agenda items and items of general interest within the subject matter within jurisdiction of the city. Although the Library Board of Trustees values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes are assigned to each speaker. Do we have any public speakers? And if you're online and would like to make a comment, just raise your hand on the Zoom.
So it's on to.
No? Okay, we've had no speakers today. Um we move on to item four. Uh consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please? Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Gary Brackett?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Moving on to item five, administrative reports. Do we have a report from the Friends of the Palm Springs Library?
Uh yes, I will be making the report for Friends today. Um Nancy Morrison wanted me to share that the Friends are now fully moved out of the Pride opening. And um they have not set um exact hours for donations, but they're working on that process right now. So they will have that to announce very soon. Um she also wanted me to share that they have decided to do an A D and D book sale during the Modernism Weekend in October. And instead of just doing a one day sale as they've done the last couple of years, they're actually going to do the whole weekend. So October sixteenth through the eighteenth uh at the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library, the Friends are going to have an architectural design and decor uh book sale. And then um they have also set a date for their Holiday Bazaar. It's a very popular event where they have many gift baskets and things to auction off. Um they've set the date of Saturday, December sixth, and that will also be at the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library. More details to come on that soon. And that concludes the report for the Friends.
Wonderful. Thank you Julie. Uh Palm Springs.
Okay, there's a question?
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
David?
I should know this, but I don't.
Okay.
Is the website up and running finally, the new website?
Yeah, yes, it is. So please go and check out Friends of the Palm Springs Library dot org. And you can check out their new website. Uh they have, they're still continuing to work on it and they have many other things coming, but all of the website has been updated currently. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, uh Palm Springs Public Library Foundation.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Uh a couple of thank yous to begin. Um first, Juanita, to you and David, to having joined while everyone at the City Council meetings recently, and um it was successful. So both of those um were successful meetings for a library project. So it were great. Um the other thank you is uh for the grant that you recently awarded us, and I wanted to give you a quick update. Um we have the interactive website that we've built through a specialty company. Um and that's going to be available to us in July. So this month we'll have that. It's an interactive website. Very interesting uh methodologies that are used to showcase um the renderings of the new library and uh pointing out uh naming opportunities for potential donors. So it's it's gonna, we think it's gonna, we're excited about it. We think it's gonna be very effective. So hopefully at one of the successive meetings, we can show it uh to you and and um preview it, but it it should be available to us going into the fall, which is what which was our objective. The second thing is there a portion of that grant was to go to um public relations and we've identified a person with whom we want to work and will uh create our or help us create the messaging and uh media placement that we described um when we proposed the grant. So we're getting close. We'll probably uh have an agreement with uh that person in the next week or two. So we'll have that person's place to work with us over the summer to plan uh what our activities are going to be and and how we would present that. Um so we're we're extremely uh happy and uh pleased with your confidence in us and hopefully uh those two big things will uh push us forward um in into the fall and and into our um uh fundraising. Um let's see, uh we, some of you know, we've been conducting uh tours of the library. And um those have been very successful. We had I think four uh of our docents trained, thank you by uh Julie and Jeannie, uh so that we could give tours and we use, I think we've done eight of them. Uh I think there's one more to be done next week. Um and I think they've been very successful. Um oh, we have two more. Okay, thank you. And we use the 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 Neighborhood Association uh mailing list, the one P S, and use that to invite uh certain people. And I think there's been eight or eight to twelve people on each of the tours. And everyone's very enthusiastic about um the library being renovated and the project getting going. And I think that will create a really good, strong word of mouth um with those organizer, neighborhood organizations that were represented there. So again, thanks uh Julie to you and Jeannie for uh training us and allowing us to do that before you're closed. So a couple of plans that we have, um our pride on the page. Be our fourth year in a row. We're going to do that November first. Um cocktails on the page. We're going to do that. That'll be our, well, second cocktail, but we had a brunch in one of those. So that'll be our third event. That's that we're going to uh try to do early in March. Um and we think we have a location in the Moody Colony where we can do that one. So that that should be a lot of fun to do. Um and we have two solicitations um for our funding um to satisfy our administrative requirements. Uh one will be our annual giving and we'll and we'll we'll be working with Carl Bloom again. Because I think I had mentioned that we had over fifty percent in improvement from one year to the next um working with that organization. Uh we're going to do, we'll probably drop those um solicitations in uh November. And uh then we'll do a library giving, which was successful for us. That was our first year this year. We did that in April. And so we're going to do that again uh in in the coming April in twenty six. Um we applied for a grant with the Big Horn Grant uh program. And we're asking for some specific equipment for the children's area. And we're crossing our fingers and optimistic. And as a matter of fact, we learned that one of the people that attended one of the tours is on that evaluation committee. So we're hoping that um that that helps us in in the evaluation. Uh our new fiscal year began uh July one. Uh we have a board meeting uh this, well, next week. Uh we'll be approving our our budget. Um and I will be preparing an annual report this month to get to Jeannie and subsequently to you folks. Um I think my due date is uh August first, so I'll get that done this month. Um couple of of uh fun internal things. We had formed a working group to help us with the technology, and I think I had mentioned this previously with our utilization of technology. So we we would be uh ready and strong uh in those areas uh when more and more donations started to come through and more and more donors to keep track of and acknowledge and 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 so on. So um we formed this working group uh under uh Jim Gray's direction. And uh we recently uh decided to make that a standing committee. Because as you can imagine, the technology is so much more important than it was even ten or fifteen years ago to um organizations like ours. So um we're very excited about that. We have, we have person uh members that um are very astute at some of the things that um I can only converse about. So it's very helpful to us um to have people that know what they're doing. And and this is giving us a lot of confidence. So that'll be a standing committee now. And then we did also expand our communications committee because um of all the activities um that are there and and Julie's sitting on that committee uh with us. Um and we had our uh second meeting um earlier this afternoon. And everybody's very enthusiastic about it. Um because we have people with specific roles and and I don't know, there's eight or nine of us on on this committee. It's a very large committee, but a big charter. So we'll keep you informed on that. And then the last thing is we were, I was very happy to see that the city did so well with the bond rating. Um because that um will make the job easier for uh securing the municipal bond uh for for the balance of the funding. So that's great. Are there any questions? What is the date of? The date of of our next meeting is Thursday. What is that, the tenth?
That's the tenth, three o'clock.
It's at a new location. It's at the um Coachella Valley, C V P, uh Coachella Valley. It it's across the street. Okay.
Um. Next to the courthouse.
What is it? Thirty one eleven Cockwoods Canyon, I think.
And so will Zoom be available?
Yes, as as long as the room's there. It will be, because I'll be out of town. So. Yes, yeah, just yeah. Well, Zoom is going to be available.
I'll be there in personnel.
Okay. And I'll be there on Zoom. That's great.
Perfect. Um I wanted to just say, Bill, that I did take the tour a week ago and Jim gave the tour and it was really good. Uh I mean, I actually learned things I didn't know about the library. So it was very good tour. And it was well attended. I think we had at least eight there that day.
Nice. Very good to hear. Thank you, Bill.
Sure.
Um that's all I have. So thanks.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And I'm so glad that things are moving along. I'm excited. Okay, do we have a staff report? All right. So I just wanted to remind everyone that the library will be closed on Friday for fourth of the, fourth of July. We'll reopen on Saturday or normal hours. Um we also still have diapers. So spread the word. If you know people in need, send them to the library for diapers um and wipes. Summer reading is in full swing. We're in our fourth week now. So far, we've had um six hundred and sixty two people register. And last year we had four fifty two total. So we're already, you know, two hundred more registrations with still two weeks to go. So we're really happy with that. And um Julie's going to share a little bit about the programs, because we still have a lot of programs um left for summer reading.
Thank you. So yes, so as Lisa said, every one of us, youth, teens and adults has um programs every week through the end of summer reading, which does end on July eighteen. Um and so uh this week, for instance, tomorrow, the teens and adults are journeying together. I'm going to go to the escape room Palm Springs and escape, hopefully. Uh Nancy had a physician this morning. Um and we have other programs coming up. She has drawing on program and also a a dinosaur safari. Um and then Stephanie has some different um kind of artistic and creative uh programs coming. And then I have a lot of trivia coming with adults, both at the um newly named Social Cafe, formerly the Play Cafe. Uh we're joining their trivia night on the fifteenth of July. And then I have my own Jeopardy trivia at the library on the seventeenth of of July. Um so lots of gaming, testing your knowledge. So lots of fun things going on. Uh check out the full schedule and join us. Um and then next Wednesday, um that's the only different thing for adults. We had to move our program to Wednesday because of other things happening. Um and we're making vision boards. So if you're interested in that, it's Wednesday at eleven thirty at the library. Um also, the poetry club continues to meet once a month at the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library. So they'll, if they meet on the last Wednesday of every month, then they're meeting through the summer. So they have one in July and one in August coming. Um and that's from four to five at the Wellwood every week, last Wednesday of the month. Um and then finally, I'm going to talk about our summer reading finale. So we're really excited about this on Saturday, July nineteenth at one o'clock. Please join us. It's free for everyone to attend. And we're going to be drawing the winners for the grand prizes that the friends so generously donated. We have ten great grand prizes. Um and one of them is um playing pickleball with the chief of police, Andy Milton. Although he's going to be gone, he's sending his likeness um along with uh one of the officers. So that should be fun. Um and we're going to have special giveaways for just people attending. So even if you didn't participate in summer reading, just come and join the party and maybe you'll get something too. Who knows? Uh so that's from one to two on Saturday, the nineteenth. Um and then the final thing I'm going to say is that um I have begun relocating the programs for the library um that will restart in the fall. And so I can say that um four of our five uh book clubs have been relocated um to other locations. Um also, our Mahjong, weekly Mahjong open play has been relocated. And so has the Palm Springs Genealogy. Um once a month lectures have also been relocated. So um we're going to be making all those announcements, putting them on our calendars, putting them in our e-newsletters about all the different locations. So it's going to be library everywhere around town. So we're excited and um more news to come on that. But I just wanted to give everyone the heads up that that is starting to happen. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Julie?
Uh perhaps this will come up later under renovation update. Um I'm curious about a farewell party on the nineteenth.
Yes, we are going to talk about it here in the renovation discussion. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the treasurer's report.
Think this is on.
Yep. It's on me.
Here we. No, no, no major changes. Nothing really to talk about. Um it's fairly consistent. Is your nodding? And I don't know if you want to add anything that was.
No, um I mean, we just finished the fiscal year. So now we go into the thirteenth month, and so they'll do all the reconciliation and then we'll start the new budget. Any questions for Al?
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the new treasurer's report?
So moved.
Good. Excellent. Are you seconded? I'll second.
May I have a roll call, please? Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Gary Brackett?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, we are at item seven, and we are going to skip that since we've already started a new member, Gary. And we'll move on um to, oh, appointing a library nominating committee for chair and vice chair and treasurer elections. So we need someone to uh to do that. Very important job. Any takers?
Sure, I'll do it. I'll do it.
Okay.
So this is just a nominated committee.
Just a nominated committee.
And who's going to be joining?
I could, can I? Am I allowed to? Okay, great. So Al and I will be the nominating committee.
Okay. I think you and I were the last time in the time.
Did that two years ago. That's right, you remember.
Hey, can I roll call, please? I don't, I don't think.
You don't either, because you appointed. Yeah, you appointed yourself and okay.
Yeah, no, no issue there. Okay, so library uh policy review and acceptance. Um including collection development policy. So last time we met, we had some questions in regards to, I know that uh Jeannie has sent um responses. Um we have a moment to discuss those. Um wherever you want to start, um David.
Um well, I I I'll I'll say this uh by way of starting the conversation. I very much appreciated uh the thoughtful responses that Jeannie provided to the list of questions I had given her following our last regular meeting. Uh then, in addition to that, uh I had the pleasure of conferring with Julie as she was uh working on refinements of the proposal that you now see before you. Uh and w- with those conversations and the modifications that we have now seen before us here, um I am uh very satisfied with moving forward personally. Uh I'll be prepared to move that after whatever conversation we need to have.
Okay, yeah, I also had an opportunity to look over, look this over. Um I too, I don't have any questions. I don't have anything to add. How about you?
No, I don't.
Did you get enough time to see that?
I read for it. I didn't have any questions.
Okay, great. That's wonderful.
Deborah, she's still there.
Uh Deborah, how about you?
No, I don't have any either. I I did, uh I told David this and I sent this to Jeannie that I ran it through um Chat G P T. Um the old one and the new one, and it just came up with some of the variances. None of them were um anything alarming. And I think David really did a great job going through it manually and covering everything. So no, I I don't have anything further.
Okay, great. Um so we do need to accept the library policy, the review and acceptance, including collection development policy.
I approve fifteen policies being accepted as presented at this meeting. Second.
Great. Have a roll call. Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Gary Brackett?
Yes.
Deborah Schwartz?
Yes.
Great. So we're moving on to the library renovation updates, which is our favorite. Um so let us know what's going on. Okay, so um the city council did um authorize the city manager to finalize the lease agreement with our temporary location. So the temporary location is going to be at Rimrock Plaza. That is on Gene Autry and Palm Canyon, one eleven um in the Bonds Shopping Center. Um as of right now, the plan is to close the library. Last day of service being July nineteenth. So the day of our summer reading finale and then our our um renovation party that Julie will talk about. And we are hoping to be closed for about two weeks. Um during that time, we won't be offering any in-person services, but all of our digital services will be available. Of course, all our online resources. Um we are making it so no books are due during that time. So we would ask that patrons hold on to any materials they have um and bring them once we reopen. That would be, you know, the best case, just so we don't have to be packing and then maybe returning things as well. Um on July ninth, the city council is set to award the construction bid. That's the plan. That's on our timeline. So as far as we know, that's still going forward, that they will award that construction bid um a week from today. So we um look forward to that. And of course, we do update EngagePalmSprings dot com. So any, all the most recent updates will be on there. And as we get closer, we'll be putting, you know, everything on social media, just making sure that everyone is aware of the, you know, temporary closure until we open in our temporary location. So.
All right. And so, yes, to talk about the renovation celebration and closing party, because we're not celebrating that we're closing, because that's not, you know, we're celebrating about renovating, right? So I'm following the finale for summer reading um from two to four on that same day, Saturday, July nineteenth. We're inviting everyone in the community, everyone who was a former board member, is a current board member, anyone that's a former employee, a current employee, everyone around who loves this library to come and join us and celebrate the renovation. We have um wonderful activities planned. Um we're going to open the time capsule um and see what's in there and uh look what we can add. We're going to have a a poet uh there who's going to do custom poems all about your love of the library for you. And he's going to create one just for this event um and present it. Uh we're going to have some fun activities. Some might say a little um not usual library experiences, but we're excited about it. It'll be super fun. Uh we'll also have face painting. We'll have a uh photo booth that you can do, have a photo done uh specific for this event to commemorate this lovely experience and all sorts of different things going on. So we really want as many people in the community to come out. We're going to have giveaways. We're going to have just a lot of fun. Um and so that is Saturday, July nineteenth, two to four, following our summer reading finale. Um everyone's invited. We just want to make this a great uh blowout event. And and then we'll we'll close and do the process that Lisa just talked about. That's that's the plan as we know it today. Now, of course, there's a few things that could, you know, disrupt that a little bit, but we're going forward with the party regardless. And I do have a formal invitation. I'll be I'll be emailing out to everyone just as a reminder as well. Um but yes, please join us for this fun, exciting time.
All right.
Oh, yes, thank you. And then uh when we do relocate to our temporary location, we are going to have a special ribbon cutting. Um so that is, watch for that, because we're going to be announcing that very soon as well. Um and so we'll ribbon cut our new location where we'll be at the Rimrock Plaza, as Lisa said. So um just some things to note that are coming very soon and well that will be followed shortly by a groundbreaking for the renovation. So lots of activities and more things to come. So just watch your emails and please stay tuned.
Hey, Al, you have a question?
I do. I I went to Rimrock Plaza just the other day. What build, which building are we talking about? I can't find.
It's it's adjacent to Bonds. If you're facing Bonds, it's directly on the right side corner where all those windows are and it's empty right now. Um it's about six thousand square feet right on the corner.
So it's about six thousand.
Yes. And that is one of the largest places that we were able to find in the city. We went to so many places and and that it would, that was probably one of the best, you know, locations.
So with the six thousand square feet, you think you can accommodate and do what we needed to do to continue?
So we're going to have a capsule collection.
Yeah, well, our collection will be smaller. We'll have about fifteen thousand items. Um and we are going to try to do some programming in the location, maybe story time and different things. Um we will have computers. We'll have magazines, DVDs, CDs, so a wide range of um our different collections. We'll still do passport services. But it will mostly be programming that we will have to take out to other locations. But everything else should be good. And we'll continue to get new items all the time.
So our our collection will stay fresh. And so we're always going to, you know, be doing that. And the Friends will also have a a book sale area there.
And and the 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 families that tend to use the library now, um this is a little farther out of town.
Um for some, that might be the case, but others, um they're excited because it's closer to them. So it's kind of relative to where you are in the city, of course. But um that's one of the wonderful things about having the opportunity to take library programs around town is that we're going to have them at different locations. So some will have, you know, James O'Jesse or DeMuth or Mizel or, you know, all these different locations. And so we'll kind of be around town so that people can grab us when we can. And we'll, we might have pop-up events where we'll have a librarian that will have um, you know, a collection of materials that people could come and get and maybe possibly return. So we're looking at all those kinds of things. We're definitely increasing our outreach, though.
Okay, great. Thank you.
How long do you expect the renovations to take? I mean, I I ballpark, I understand.
Yeah, they say.
They never know.
They say eighteen months to thirty six, and that's a big window. But the reason being is there's several things that they don't know. One is in any impact of possible tariffs that could be in effect at that time. Also, the um availability of materials with the L A fires, there's a lot of rebuilding. So we don't know if any of that will be impacted. And then when they get into the renovation, they might discover something that, you know, might impact things, anything else. I mean, so it's kind of a big window right now. We're kind of hoping for the lesser time, but it is what it is. Yeah. We're kind of hoping for the lesser time, but it is what it is, yeah. We've planned for the longest.
Yeah.
Yes, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll go to you next, okay.
Okay, um, and back to the party. Is there any particular role for the foundation and the uh, Friends?
Um, well, uh, as I said, all the former and current board members are being invited and we're definitely gonna recognize all those different organizations. Um, the Friends are actually providing us um, with a big group of volunteers to help us facilitate the party. Um, and so they're gonna be very actively involved in that. Um. In, in terms of like a certain role, we're still kind of working out the um, agenda for the actual um, day. Uh, so there's, there's gonna be some uh, guest speakers and things like that. So that is quite possible, but I, I couldn't answer that one hundred percent for you right now.
Okay, and we have a question from someone in the audience. Go ahead.
For the items that don't wind up at Rimrock, is there going to be any provision for a patron to put a hold on it and then. Twenty-four hour, thirty-six and forty-eight hour time period, get it retrieved from storage and check it out?
Um, no, unfortunately, the stuff in storage will be just in storage. We won't have access to it. We will continue to offer interlibrary loan um, services so people can get that. We are hoping to get zip books again. We've applied for funding, so we're hoping that with I L L and zip books, we can still get the materials that aren't readily available. And we can still get them for our patrons, we're hoping.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much. That was very informative and I'm super excited. Um, I'm not gonna be here on the nineteenth.
Yeah, I'm not, won't either. I'm on a plane that day, six in the morning.
I could tell you the date. It's, it's a moving target. We know. It has been.
Um, okay, great. We don't need a motion for this, right? Okay, good. Uh, all right, so um, do we have any, any other reports now? Okay. All right, anything else that we need to uh, talk about for the upcoming agenda? Get ahold of Jeannie, send her an email and let her know. Um, great. So I'm calling this, uh, adjourning the meeting of the Library Board Trustees. Um, it is six oh three. Thank you.
That's a record.
It is.
All about breaking records, thank you.